I'm not fully familiar with everything that was in that or any agreements that were made. I would have to ask Romanelli or check back into the original documents. To your first question, the number of parking spaces was determined based on the amount of space that we have.
Square footage of your building, using code?
Yeah, the square footage of the building is one per 200. We can only fit 71 instead of 86 on the site. There's just no room to put additional spaces.
Okay. So you know there is one solution to that?
That's always, I was gonna get there too.
That's a solution that I cannot commit to. I know where you're going.
Yep.
I mean, I appreciate you maxing out your space and presenting an opportunity to bring jobs to the township. My concern would just be as if, if what you're saying is true, is you've created the parking count based on that's the most you can fit on there, rather than that is all you need for the use, is a different discussion. And then the follow-up is if you don't have a shared parking agreement, what's going to happen when this parking does need more than 71 and maybe two less? That's the only concern I'm regarding parking. Joe, maybe you can address whether there's a shared parking agreement? I don't know if you have shared access. I deal in these all the time, whether it's, you can't enforce it anyway? People are going to park wherever they can get a spot?
Yeah, I think it's difficult to prove who's parking there and for what reason, correct? I, I didn't do a deep dive into it, so I'm not aware whether there is a shared parking agreement or not. I mean, I believe Romanelli was the one who developed the Goodwill site, but I also believe the Goodwill site has since sold to, I believe, Goodwill, since that was done. Yeah, it's a bit of a chicken and the egg situation because it, it, I, because the concern is valid in terms of are you going to have enough parking spaces? But these are also being sort of, these are just shell buildings, so the applicant also has the ability to control who the tenants are going to be in it and making sure they can say, okay, this is how much parking I have on the site. Is this going to work for you? Because this is all you're going to get, and there's really no room to amend the plan to add anymore. So you, you have that going for you too, is the applicant can control who's going to go into this space and also control, okay, based on the number of tenants, how many spaces per tenant are going to be allocated? And that's on the applicant, you know, the landlord to enforce internally of making sure spaces are being used by the proper individuals, so. You know, as I've said in some of the prior meetings here at the zoning commission levels, the general trend in planning land is to not be so concerned about the number of parking spaces. A lot of parking regs existed from the time when like people were literally having to park on the street and parking all over grass because there weren't any regulations decades ago. You know, but it's, it's, that's not really a problem. We see too terribly much anymore, especially in more well-developed sophisticated areas.
I, I understand that, but that's not the way our code's written. So I would ask again is, I mean, and it leads into actually one of my other comments, which is you don't have, you haven't identified any tenants. So this is spec space, right? You're going to build a shell?
Currently, currently, there are no end users identified.
And then how does that impact their commitment to schedule? I guess you, you're going to build the shell regardless of whether you have locked-in tenants. And if it sits empty for as long as Vince can support it, it's going to sit empty.
Yeah, that's generally how these work.
That's, that's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, honestly, I've looked through this. That's, those are really the only concerns I have. And maybe if we could, I'm just trying to think of a way we protect us from them parking wherever they can find a spot, whether it's in grass, is, if this can be contingent, I, I mean, me and my family, we use Goodwill both ways. So I know it's very rarely got cars parked.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe it would be nice if we could put a caveat on this, that we would approve this based upon a shared parking agreement between the two properties. Vince would be opposed to that. I know it's not his property anymore, but that might help ease this concern about adequate parking.
I, I don't know what the potential of getting that to happen is.
If you could turn your mic on, it's not on. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't know what the potential of that happening is. I'm sure on Romanelli's end, I, I think I can speak for them that they would make the attempt. Well, how well that would be received on, since they no longer own that property or have any controlling interest in it, it may be difficult to get someone to agree to that. I don't know.
I would think short of signage that said parking for Goodwill only, or parking for your area only, or parking for Buckeye Gymnastics only. People are going to go where they want to go, and even then, they go where they want to go.
Yeah. I, I would agree with you on that. I, I've seen that a lot. You have different, you know, you go to the, to the mall and they've got the different outlets and one of them will be full. Well, you know, you see people walking across over to, to the restaurant from the hardware store because the hardware store had empty spaces. Unless, unless they've got it posted, there's really no way to enforce keeping them out.
But I'm still concerned about the initial two space, spaces that I mentioned. Because I just don't think that they're safe spaces to get out of. In, not such a big deal.
I understand what you're saying. The one on the southeast side, I think that one's pretty much a no-brainer. The one on the, I think we can do both of them. The one on the northwest, the reason we didn't have that little back out area is that there's an existing ditch that runs along the north property line. And we have to grade up to the end of the parking lot from that, and there just wasn't room to get that, that turnaround tail that you're talking about by eliminating the other space. That was the reason we didn't have it to begin with. Typically, we would.
Sure.
We've got a little bit of one there, but we just couldn't force it out the length of a car because the grade would then be too steep going down to the ditch.
So you had?
I think Romanelli would be open to dropping those two if, if it meant that, you know, they get an approved application, they, they would drop them.
My only concerns have been addressed. The parking, which then led to building size, which is the elephant in the room.
Yeah, it really amounted to having to keep that detention area, just kind of really limited what we were able to do with it.
Any other discussion?
I know you can't speak for Mr. Romanelli, but he is not here, so you're speaking on his behalf. We could split the difference and you could reduce the size of building A to allow for more parking. That would reduce the size of your building and allow you to get another row of parking spots there on the northeast corner. And you'd be closer, since we are taking out two more because of safety.
Yeah, as I said, that's, that's not a decision that I can, can render this evening for you. I can't make that decision for them.
I understand.
I do think they would be open to trying to get that cross-parking agreement with Goodwill. If that would ease everyone's minds, they, they would be open to try, attempting to get that. I can't guarantee they could get it, but I think they would sooner do that than chop off the end of a bill.
Yeah. How can we go about that, Joe?
If the applicant and the board wanted more time for the applicant to pursue that avenue... avenue, we certainly could continue this to a future date with the understanding that basically, it sounds like the board doesn't really have any other concerns. You're essentially just looking to see if they were able to secure that. And if they do, it sounds like it's going to be a pretty quick wrap-up of the hearing. If they don't, then the board will have to make a decision as to, you know, how you want to vote. If you do continue, you obviously will have to make a decision. Do you want another special meeting or do you want it just as an agenda item during like the August or September regular meeting, I guess, depending upon the board's desires and the applicant's availability. I don't think granting, I don't, we can't grant an approval saying, well, your approval's only good so long as you get this. I don't think we can do that, though.
Yeah, this is a real catch-22 because it's, it is, it's kind of refreshing that you're not paving a sea of asphalt. In that way, in that regard, it's good. I guess we can review the divergence, and if we feel like the divergence isn't applicable to the A through F item, A through G questions, then we can turn it down. Right?
Do you want to proceed or do you, are you saying that we, it doesn't matter, the answer to our question?
Well, it-
We can't take it into consideration because I feel-
Well, no, if you have a concern about the parking, they're asking for divergence on the parking. So I think that's a fair question to ask. It's just up to the applicant as to whether or not they're willing to request a continuance to pursue that, or if they're going to say, no, I want my vote tonight.
What's your preference?
That's basically the options.
If it would mean reducing the size of building A, then I think we better do a continuance to allow me time to consult with my client, to give them, I, I, what I'm hearing is, the options are reduce building A to get more parking on the east end of that building, or get a cross-parking.
Yeah.
You're not willing to grant the full divergence of what we're asking for now, lest the two spaces that trustee Goodman is asking, Goodman is asking for, excuse me.
That's my preference.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be overly concerned if it weren't such a significant number because now we're 17 spots short. If it were a couple, half a dozen maybe even, but I think that's like 20, 20, more than 20% of your parking is pretty significant. So that's what I would recommend we do.
Where did you come up with 17? I had 15.
Because you want to take two more.
Well, but there were 13. Am I missing? They, we need 84.
Oh, yeah. I, I wrote down 15, but it was include your two.
Okay. I just thought I missed some.
Yeah, yeah, no. Good catch.
So then the decision would be, assuming the applicant, and it sounds like they are agreeable to the continuance, when you would want to do that, whether or not you'd want it just as an agenda item during the regular meeting, which would be Thursday, what is that, August?
It's only in two weeks, though.
Is that the first? Yeah, that's not a lot of time to turn around. Otherwise, you're looking at a special meeting or your regular meeting in September, which would be the fifth.
Yeah, so I guess your challenge would be if you can get the agreement and you don't need to modify anything, in two weeks, we could have the hearing. But if you have to modify your plans, you're probably going to need more than two weeks.
We could put it on the August agenda, and if you're not ready, we continue it.
Correct. That is-
We will send a formal request in to continue it then to the, I guess, the September, if it looks like we're not going to make it. Okay.
Yeah, that, we could handle it that way, yes.
So what, what is the next date?
So their next-
August 1st.
Is that the board's preference to have it on your regular agenda?
Oh, I think, I, I think even with the modifications to the site plan, the hearing should be relatively quick.
That's what I think. Right? You good with that?
If you get the agreement, that's going to be in and out. So I think I have a real number-
Get the agreement and take out the two spots that you would-
Right.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll-
All right, I'll read the motion.
Okay.
I move to continue the public hearing for the subject final development plan application requested by Romanelli GW LLC, ZC case number 2023-05, also known as North Gate Office, until August 1st at 6:30 PM in the Township Administration Building. Additional or revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development Zoning Department by July 31st? No. Doesn't give you enough time, does it?
Um, I'll make it happen if, I mean, I feel like we gotta be fair to give them enough time to try to get it done, so.
Okay. Motion done. Have a second?
Second.
Roll, Joe.
Roll call. Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Antonets.
Yes. Motion carried. This portion of the hearing is over. Thank you. Okay, this time I call the following he, hearing to order is, is 7:03 PM. The, the application is Mindy Cosman?
Cosman.
Cosman, sorry. Requesting approval of final development plan to construct an approximately 2,400 square foot office building on approximately 1.09 acres at 5064 South Old 3C Highway, Westerville, Ohio, 43082. Property identification number 31724003019000. Currently zoned planned commercial district, also known as the Olive Branch, ZC case number 2024-03. I would ask anybody who's, who is planning or thought, the thought of providing public comment or input, please stand to be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Great. The legal notice for this meeting was printed and labeled on July 6, 2024 in the Delaware Gazette and posted in the General Town, Genoa Township Hall on July 3, 2024. An attempt to send notice of this meeting to adjacent property owners was also made. The following exhibits were marked, A is legal notice, B affidavit of advertisement, C sign-in sheet, D application and plans revised July 8 of this year, fire marshal email dated July 9 of this year, trustee acknowledgement of the zoning commission's recommendation made on June 27 of this year, staff memo dated July 12, 2024, for July 22, 2024, staff technical review dated July 12, 2024. All public comments received between April 15, 2024, and July 22, 2024. Joe, can you please provide a staff report?
Thank you, trustee Antonets. Again, I'll try to summarize this the best I can. There is more to go through here, so it's probably going to take a little longer than the last hearing did. So as you noted, the, the site here we're talking about, I think we're all very familiar with in this room. It's right outside here, northwest corner of Big Walnut Road, Salto 3C Highway, for years known as the Genoa Lawn Center. As we all know, the site is surrounded, across the street is our building that we're sitting in. There's a couple homes on the other corners. There's a home to the west, a home to the, nearly north of this site, and then a subdivision being built in the northwest of this property. All its properties being zoned rural residential with the exception of the White House immediately to the north, which is also zoned planned commercial. This, so the, the proposed use, I'm sorry, I'll go back to that for a minute, is for the practice as a psychiatric, a mental health nurse practitioner, which is the Olive Branch, as you noted. It also include approximately six offices, two half-bass, a waiting room and a break room, main floor storage, and an open storage room on the second floor. Some of the offices may also be run out for other type of medical office and/or office users. The existing 576 square foot accessory building on the property would remain and be used for storage primarily for, for equipment used to maintain the property. Also, as I think most people in this room are well aware of by now, the prop, the intersection out there is going to be improved with a roundabout of sorts. It's the peanut-shaped style roundabout. For those of you who have travel, traveled a little bit into northern Delaware County, I believe, 61, I think, has one of these. They're becoming quite the thing and very popular very quickly with the engineer's office, it would seem. The property, as noted in the advertisement, is zoned planned commercial with the Hoover watershed overlay. I believe this is probably the first time we've actually applied the Hoover watershed overlay zoning district to a development. And then obviously the, the size of the parcel, the roundabout, taking additional right-of-way, basically all corners of that intersection have presented some challenges that we're going to get into. The site has extensive history. I'm not going to go through all of it because some of it is somewhat moot at this point or more academic than it is applicable. But the former building that was torn down late last year, early this year, had been there. It's, that building was probably nearly 100 years old. By the research I've done, it's may have been there for at least, on the current site, for 100 years. I believe it got relocated from the old village of Africa and or, over in Orange Township at some point to this site. It's been a general store, lawn repair center. It was in front of the BZA numerous times back in 2009 and 2010 for all sorts of things, including the farmer market that was out there for numerous years that I'm sure a lot of us recall. Again, the memo's being entered as an exhibit, so this is all more thoroughly described and detailed therein. The site posed a very unique challenge to the staff for a number of years because it was very odd that it's zoned planned commercial but has no final development plan. The best we can tell is when the two zoning codes in 1987 were merged, the decision, for whatever reason, was to place this lot, as well as the lot next to it, into the planned commercial district, which was all well and good, but since no final development plan ever existed for the site, it was very difficult to tell people of the years exactly what they could do on the property or what they could change on the property. We told the prior tenant numerous times when he would want to do stuff that, to get this all cleaned up, he would have to file a final development plan. Never did that. Obviously, ultimately closed the business, sold the property, and now we've got new owners with the application before you this evening. The whole situation was generally considered grandfathered in, so they were sort of allowed to continue what was there, but the second they wanted to change things, that's where it really started to become problematic. So on one hand, staff is very thankful that we're finally going through the final development plan process because eventually, when something gets approved for the site, it's really going to make it a lot easier to administer zoning for this property. There were several attempts by some other users to try to take this property, either the former primary building and/or the rear accessory buildings. They even, several of them got change of use permits issued, none of which actually ever came to fruition. Staff met with the current owners last year when they were considering acquisition, talked about the process, talked about code regulations, and then they decided to ultimately purchase the property late last year, started the demolition, and then obviously applied for this zoning request a few months ago. So as you can see on the drawing, the proposed building, 2,400 square feet, would sit on the southeast corner of the lot, parallel to Big Walnut Road. The building height is code compliant 33 feet 6 inches, measured from the mean grade to the top of the proposed cupola, as illustrated in the elevation drawings that were provided. The height of the building, absent of the cupola, actually comes in around 25 feet 10 inches, measured from the mean grade, again, also code compliant. This height, the, the height minus the cupola would be generally consistent with the two-story, a lot of two-story residential structures in this area.
Mark, can you slow down a little bit? Because he's talking so fast and you can't understand anything back there.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, do you want me to slow down? I will do my best.
As best you can.
I'll do my best. There's a lot to cover.
All right, well, the best you can.
So in terms of traffic and access, development appears to have taken account, into account the right-of-way for the future roundabout project. The parcel would be accessed via a single access point off of Big Walnut Road. Access to the site from South Old 3C Highway would apparently no longer exist. We were provided trip generation analysis figures where you can see they're relatively insignificant in terms of the number of trips being generated on and off the site. I did send a copy of these plans to the county engineer, asking them for any feedback. Never received any. However, the applicants, one of the applicant representatives did testify to the zoning commission that they are actually working with the county on designing that roundabout, so they are very well aware of what the requirements are in terms of right-of-way and design for that project. Obviously, construction of the roundabout is going to create a much safer intersection. I know some people have personal dislike of roundabouts, but as someone who sits at the window next to the intersection every day and hears the horn honk, I think it's going to be an improvement, at least for my ears, if nothing else. And also from a safe, to be serious though, from a safety standpoint, you know, a lot of the accidents that do happen out there are very high-speed, side collisions here, as well as the one down at Tusick and Big Walnut. We've seen some very severe accidents there. Roundabout accidents, while occasionally more frequent, especially when they're first opened, tend to be a lot less severe from what I'm told by the engineer's office because they're slower speed, shallower angles, fender-bender kind of accidents by and large. In terms of parking for the site, the lot, the parking lot is situated just west of the proposed building, which contains 17 parking spaces, which includes one accessible space with curb blocks. This complies with the code requirement, which calculates up to 12 spaces. The plan incorporated staff suggestion to provide a turnaround area, hence the loss of two spaces from a prior iteration that the zoning commission had seen of this plan. The width of the proposed drive aisle is a code compliant 25 feet. Regarding pedestrian access, multi-use path already exists along the site's Old 3C frontage. I'm not aware that the county's plans include any pedestrian paths along the Big Walnut frontage. We did have Mulberry Estates, which is the subdivision developing to the west, northwest of this, provide an easement across their frontage should a path ever be needed. And there is going to be a divergence, then I'm going to get into more on this subject, so maybe I shouldn't dwell on this particular subject too long. But also, I should note, Big Walnut Road is ultimately a township road. We did try to have our state rep try to secure funding for us to actually build a multi-use path along the north side of Big Walnut Road this year. Unfortunately, those attempts were unsuccessful, it seems in the latest budget proposal we've seen out of the state. But it's nothing to say we couldn't try again in the future. So again, there's a divergence related to that, but I'll speak to that momentarily. The site is going to have sidewalks, obviously accessing the parking lot on the eastern side of the lot, as well as a few different sides of the building where to enter, so people will be able to walk from the parking lot into that building on a designated path. In terms of lighting, two pole-mounted light fixtures will be, will be provided to eliminate the parking lot, one along the western parking row, one along the eastern parking row. The western, southern, and eastern entrances of the building will also be flanked by building-mounted lighting fixtures. Fixure specifications and lighting plans were provided and demonstrate code compliance. In terms of landscaping, two existing trees on the western end of the site near the septic mound have remained. And that septic mound's really important because that's really what's driving a lot of the site design, absent of trying to dig it, dig it up and relocate it elsewhere on site or connecting to sewer, which is generally seemingly infeasible given the distance from, to the closest sewer line. I believe they'd either have to go up to like Vinmar Farms or all the way down to like Covington Meadows to get sewer. It's the same problem this building frankly has, is we're just too far for sewer to run to make sense, be just too costly. So there's so much stuff with the septic system that's been there, and the septic system's actually an improvement from what used to be there, which I was told was literally just an outhouse. I think the septic system got put in 10, 12 or so years ago to improve that situation. Anyway, back to landscaping, sorry, I digressed there for a moment. Two other trees shown as remaining on the site, however, they are in the expanded Big Walnut Road right-of-way and can outcourt, count towards site landscaping. 12 additional trees would be planted along the site's western lot line, shared with Mulberry Estates. Five additional trees would be planted along the site's, site's south Old 3C Highway frontage. The applicant has conveyed that the driveway currently in this portion of the site would be removed, leaving the county and/or property owner to the north to adjust their access accordingly. Building foundation shrubs, as I noted, would also be provided along the building. For signage, two freestanding post and panel signs, each having a face on each side are proposed for the development, one along Big Walnut Road, one along South Old 3C Highway. Proposed heights are eight feet tall. The sign area is 16 square feet per side total, which breaks down to eight square feet for the main sign area and total on eight square feet broken up between all the panels they want for the sign. So if you recall, sort of a model I think they used for the sign is there's, there's an existing multi-tenant sign down there in front of the buildings at Route 3 Chandler Mount Royal. That's the buildings that like Wright rug, Coder School are in. They have sort of a, a similar sign design where they've got sort of the main sign, and then they've got sub panels for all the tenants that are back in that building. So you can see in the materials that are submitted, their sign looks very similar to that style. The current proposal does not seek to incorporate any sign bonuses allowed under the code. The current proposal does not seek to incorporate any sign bonuses allowed under the code for signage, however, information about those bonuses was included for reference. No building-mounted signage appears to be proposed. The applicant will also obviously be entitled to certain signage that all sites are entitled to under Section 1803 of the zoning resolution, as further regulated therein. I already covered the septic system. We did get some confirmation late, right before the last zoning commission meeting in June, that the county health has, I think, signed off on the, this development happening, utilizing the existing septic system. And I know the applicant has a lot more information they can speak to more in depthly on that subject. Stormwater management would be provided via an underground detention basin beneath the proposed parking lot. There was a soil analysis done that shows that the soils on the site are very similar to the rest of the poor draining soils found throughout the township and the rest of this portion of Delaware County. Letters confirming utility availability have been provided from water and electric companies. There was no letter from the gas company, as gas is not needed for the site. And we've already talked about the sewer and septic issue. The proposal does not appear to include a dumpster. The applicant is proposing to keep what they anticipate a relatively small amount of waste in a portable refuse tote, kept in an inconspicuous location on non-collection days. Divergences, this is really where we get into the meat of the proposal. So there are several divergences requested due to the unique, due to the existing size, unique geometry of the parcel, as well as due to the pending right-of-way expansion. So, again, I'm going to try to go through them quickly, but slowly, if that makes sense. So divergence number one to Section 703, O3A4 requires 170-foot open space buffer along the track's perimeter street frontage. Their request is to provide a setback of one foot off the Big Walnut Road right-of-way and 34 feet from the South Old 3C Highway right-of-way. Divergence number two is to Section 703, O3B, which requires that a required open space perimeter be planted to certain specifications. In the code, the request is to allow for a custom landscaping plan that does not meet the code, but according to the applicant, quote, "captures the intent of the code and will be an improvement to the existing condition." Divergence three is to Section 703, O8A, which requires that parking lots be located no closer than 170 feet from the edge of the contiguous right-of-way. Again, the request is to provide a setback of one foot from the Big Walnut Road right-of-way and 108 feet from the South Old 3C Highway right-of-way. The divergence request number four to Section 703 dot O8 dot B, which requires that the required parking lot setback be landscaped to certain specifications. The request is to allow for a custom landscaping plan that does not meet the code, but again, according to the applicant, captures the intent of the code and will be an improvement to the existing condition. Divergence number five is to Section 703 dot 10, which requires a sidewalk multi-use path or pedestrian easement along the parcel's frontage on existing streets. The request is to not provide the, those amenities. Divergence six to Section 1203, O3, subsections A and B, which requires a 75-foot wide green strip between any development of the property and any lot line shared with a residential or planned residential zone property, as well as to provide a 75-foot wide visual and mechanical buffer in such area. The request is to reduce the required setback to no less than 40 feet. Divergence number seven to Section 1203 dot O9 dot C, which requires the parking lot to be located no closer than 75 feet from the edge of the contiguous right-of, continuous right-of-way. Their request is to reduce the setback to one foot along Big Walnut Road. This is similar to the request for Section 703, O8A that I've already read. Divergence request number eight to Section 1208 dot O1 requires buildings be separated by at least 50 feet and that no building be located closer than 100 feet to a zoning district boundary line or a street right-of-way. Their request is to construct a building eight and a half feet from the Big Walnut Road right-of-way and approximately 35 and a half, give or take, feet from the South Old 3C Highway right-of-way. Setbacks from the district boundary lines in between buildings are a minimum of approximately 44.03 feet and 64.08 feet, respectively. Divergence number nine to Section 1804 dot 07, which requires that signs shall be set back at least 10 feet from the right-of-way. Their request is to allow freestanding post and panel signs to be set back two feet from the right-of-way. One sign is adjacent to Big Walnut Road, as I noted, the other, Old 3. Those are the nine divergences being requested. While the number of divergences requested seems relatively large, this figure is slightly deceiving. Some of the requests deal with the same general concept or requirement, but are requested separately due to the fact that the same or similar code standards exist in more than, in more than one applicable location, pardon me, within the zoning resolution. From a big-picture perspective, the current requests boil down to really what I would say five issues. That, one, align the proposed parking lot to be located to both road frontages and presumably not require the plantings. Two, not providing a pedestrian way or easement along Big Walnut Road. Three, allowing the development to encroach into the residential, planned residential setback. Four, allowing the building to be built closer to Big Walnut Road and South Old 3C Highway while simultaneously reducing the zoning district boundary setback and the required building separation distance, along with the associated plantings. And five, allowing signs to be located closer to the right-of-way of Big Walnut Road and South Old 3C Highway. So moving into staff commentary. Commercial utilization of the subject property is generally consistent with the recommendations of the Genoa Township Comprehensive Plan. Chapter four of the plan recommends neighborhood-scale commercial slash office uses on parcels already zoned commercial and/or industrial. However, that recommendation technically only applies to properties serviced by sanitary sewer. That said, while this property is not serviced by sanitary sewer, as already noted, has been zoned for commercial use for decades and planned for commercial zoning and use since at least the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. Furthermore, the Comprehensive Plan map shows the land use recommendation of neighborhood-scale commercial planned in parentheses. This makes it clear that continued commercial use of the property is envisioned by the township. Staff's technical review is attached to this memorandum. Outstanding comments at this point only pertain to text cleanup and wordsmithing, those being pertaining to just documenting in all locations the distance of the proposed buildings from other buildings on and off-site. That information's in the zoning text, but needs to be included in the divergence text, so it's really just polishing the text. And the second item was the illumination times of the signs. The time restrictions actually apply to both signs because they're both subject to that standard. So, again, that's mostly just text cleanup. The zoning commission, by a four-to-one vote, recommended approval of the subject application to the trustees during their regular meeting on June 10th of this year. Just a little bit of staff sort of opinion opining here. The primary reason for setback requirements from right-of-way lines is to, generally to ensure that sufficient room exists should a right-of-way ever need to be expanded to accommodate roads, pedestrian infrastructure, drainage, or utilities. The aesthetics of such are generally subjective. As a general matter, modern planners tend to advocate for buildings in particular to be located closer to the road, as they enhance the pedestrian experience and can actually assist in traffic calming. Building on those points, a significant portion of this lot's property along Big Walnut Road will be taken as right-of-way for most, if not all, the aforementioned purposes. While staff cannot say whether the road intersection will ever need to be expanded in the future post-roundabout construction, it seems unlikely that such expansion will be needed anytime soon after that project is complete, although I don't have a crystal ball, admittedly. Furthermore, the proposed building setback figures are a little misleading due to the significant enlargement of the adjacent right-of-way, especially along Big Walnut Road. The building as proposed would have been set back around 33 and a half feet from the old Big Walnut Road right-of-way line, and would be set back a total of about 40 or more feet from the proposed curb of Big Walnut Road itself. A significant improvement from the position of the old building, which was much closer. Similarly, the building appears like it would be set around 40 or more feet back from the curb of South Old 3C Highway. This is a 32-foot, give or take, improvement from the position of the previous building. The northeast corner of the proposed building will be, being generally in line with the setback of the existing farmhouse next door, according to the drawing. The same line of thinking applies to the parking lot, as its setback would have been 26 feet from the old Big Walnut Road right-of-way and will be, in reality, set back 38 and a half feet from the curb of Big Walnut Road. Despite the numerous divergence requests, utilization of the current planned commercial zoning designation is, as noted, consistent with the township's comp plan map, and if nothing else, fair, considering the fact that it was a classification seemingly imposed on the property by the township over 35 years ago. Furthermore, asking the property owner to rezone would be onerous, as it is an action the township may have been able to proactively and unilaterally undertake at any time.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes, sir.
I really would rather you not read this whole thing.
Okay.
Just hit the highlights.
Sure.
So we don't have this long.
Okay. Basically, I don't think it'd be fair to ask them to try to rezone the property for the reasons stated there. And even if you go to the straight zoning district, that just creates a whole new set of challenges and issues, and then they would have had to go to the BZA for variances. They, again, given the size of this site, they would have been in that boat one way or the other. My recommendation is to work with the applicant, to, within reason and as much as the board is comfortable, to accommodate something on this site, given all the challenges that they have from the right-of-way, the roundabout, the right-of-way take, existing septic system, utilities, everything that this site has going on for it. It's a very challenging site. I do ask the board to take the following into consideration. The PCD and by extension Hoover Watershed Overlay Zoning District standards, we're assuming the property in question would be at least five acres in size, which is the minimum PCD requirement. The existing parcel, especially post-right-of-way acreage, is less than that, a fifth of that size, so it's understandable that relief is going to be needed. Without divergences, development of this property in any kind of reasonable or significant manner would be difficult, if not impossible. Leaving the lot underdeveloped, undeveloped would not be good for the community and could even potentially create illegal problems for the township, specifically if it could be considered a regulatory taking. If someone could prove that, you know, by holding them to the letter of the law under the zoning code, that they really can't do anything on the property, then essentially a court could tell the township, well, now you get to buy it because you basically have told them your laws aren't going to allow them to do anything. The proposed building, as I noted, will sit back further from the road than the previous building did. The applicant could have opted to just retain the existing building and proved it, as it was grandfathered. Obviously, they instead opted to go a different direction with the project. Regarding the placement of the proposed building in vehicular traffic, we've already got a multi-use trail along South Old 3C, so it might be a difficult argument, if challenged to make, that somehow it was safe to have a trail along Old 3C and possibly Big Walnut Road, but that having a building there would be unsafe. I think that could be a different, or a difficult issue to overcome if we had to try to argue that point. There are several older buildings in the township, including some barns and old farmhouses along Old 3C Highway of similar scale that sit relatively close to the road already. Running this proposal ironically, you know, some people think it's not, because it's closer to the road, it's actually not rural and not fitting with the character, but I feel like if you drive up and down the road, especially with the really old stuff that predate zoning, you, this is somewhat of what you see. I can think of a few different houses and a couple barns that sit pretty close to this There are very few vacant or underutilized commercial properties left in the township. This is especially important to note, since the township is getting closer to reaching build-out. Allowing properties to redevelop encourages reinvestment and will also allow the community to evolve to meet the needs of residents and the market, as opposed to stagnating. If the trustees are inclined to approve the plan, staff would be comfortable with such action, with the condition that all outstanding comments in the tech review document presented this evening be sufficiently addressed prior to issuance of a zoning permit for the proposed building. The applicant would obviously have to be agreeable to such a condition. And finally, if the application is approved, it shall be subject to obvious, the provisions of the zoning resolution, the code sections are provided in the memorandum. So with that, Acting Chairman Antonets, I'm not going to belabor the point, the technical review documents basically just regurgitates ad nauseam everything I just went through in the memo in greater detail, so unless there's any questions, yield the floor.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the applicant's response, comments, questions. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, I'm Mindy Cosman, owner of the Olive Branch, 5618 Harrow Glen Court, Galena 43021.
You could just scooch, you gotta eat the microphone. I hate to say that, but you do.
I'm Mindy Cosman, owner of the Olive Branch. My address is 5618 Harrow Glen Court, Galena 43021.
I'm Bill Myers with KO Builders. I live at 13846 Ullery Road, Sunbury, Ohio.
Mark Holbrook, KO Builders, 2355 Cross Creek Court, Lewis Center, Ohio, 43035.
Thank you. So you've heard the staff presentation, I'm sure you've worked back and forth significantly, I see.
A lot.
So feel free to comment, ask questions. It's up to you.
We appreciate all of the work that everyone has put into this project thus far. Obviously, it's a difficult piece of land. I think that there's a reason that it sat vacant for a significant period of time before we purchased it. It's perfect for me because it's 1.9 miles from my house and gets me off of, up and down 71 all of the time. And so, for me, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and I think this is a great space to develop for my personal use and to bring other therapists who are currently working in Worthington, downtown, other areas, who would like to also work closer to their home. Septic has been the question from the second that we set foot on the property, was that going to be sufficient? And I do believe that we have done all of the due diligence and have answered the question as much as possible of that, yes, the septic system is adequate for what we're putting in, and we've already begun some remediation on that. The primary reasons that we pulled down the two, two buildings that we did were insurance-related. Nobody wanted to insure this property. We had to hold off closing on the property multiple times because of insurance issues, and so we closed and boom, we brought those buildings down, and that was the primary reason for bringing them down when we, we did. There wasn't, wasn't much there to save, the bones were not good, and so we felt that we would put more money into trying to refurbish something that was grandfathered in so many times than to just bring it down and start over. And so what we're proposing is an office for myself, as well as for five, probably complimentary services, meaning something else psychiatric-related. That said, the building needs to rent, I need occupants, so if someone is a State Farm agent and wants to come in and, you know, has a quiet footprint and would be compatible with what we have going on within the building, then that would be just fine. But those who have expressed interest and who I have on the docket to rent are all mental health-related and would be complimentary services to what I'm doing.
Again, challenging site. I think putting the puzzle pieces together to try and figure out how can we position a building here, get it far enough off the road that it is safe, but also keep the existing septic system and meet the code to be far enough away from there, as well as fitting the parking on there. I think it's pretty amazing that we were able to fit it all on there. So it's very challenging. It definitely needs some consideration. It's been great work, working with the zoning folks and Joe. They've done a lot of work with us, a lot of give and take, to shape it into something that we think is feasible.
I would concur. There's a lot of engineering to this. There's been a lot of thoughts aesthetic-wise, there's been a lot of back and forth in a positive collaborative manner. Joe's been fantastic. The zoning board was great and had great concerns that we worked through. I know there are a lot of divergences, but to shoehorn in all that had to be shoehorned in and still meet all the requirements with only the divergences we had, I think, somebody joked that you couldn't have got a photo mark building on this site, you know, and met the requirements, or you couldn't, you couldn't build on this site anything, really, if you didn't have some divergences. And we appreciate everybody's consideration, helped us get to this point. And again, all the engineering aesthetics, and still to have something that we feel is a representative of everything else in Genoa Township. It's a great place to live and work, which our client lives here and wants to be working here as well. I think it is a good compliment to it, and hopefully everyone can be on board with what we're trying to do here.
Great. Anything else? Thank you. We'll open up to public comment. And I would like to remind any public comment that we are not an architectural design review board, we're not a planning commission, our evaluation is based purely on zoning. We don't design buildings, so please consider that in your discussion.
Thank you. My name's Rick Whelan, I'm at 9500 Britton Woods Drive, Galena. I presented a letter to the trustees on Saturday. Did each of you receive that letter? Do you have it with you this evening for reference?
I don't have it, but I did read it.
Do you want a copy of it, Mark? I'll get it to you. Let me see. I'd like to review, I don't know if I need to read this letter into record and stuff, or I can just highlight some of the points and stuff on it. Well, let me just go over a couple of points and stuff on it, because I sent you guys these information and comments. I was at a couple of the previous zoning meetings and listened to this case a couple times, and I've reviewed it a couple times on the U. of times, and I've reviewed it a couple of times on the YouTube video and stuff. So I came up with a lot of stuff because I'm concerned with the, and I had a response to the number of divergences and stuff that they're requesting for this site, and the location of the building, the placement of it, as far as being too close to the road, as far as I'm concerned. So I came up with a list, I addressed all the divergences in my list and stuff to you guys, and I don't know if I need to go through that all right now, but I could. But I'd rather you guys consider all those things and probably address them and comment as yourselves going forward in this meeting. Otherwise, I need to have answers to a lot of these questions on these divergences. A lot of the stuff at the zoning commission meeting was not addressed on some of this stuff. There was really only one member there, Sebastian, that asked the majority of the questions. A lot of the other members didn't have a lot of comments, a lot of questions on stuff. And if they did, it related to signage and some stuff that really wasn't very appropriate, you know, a lot of the major stuff for the site. So I did come up with a couple sites, I just, I want to read this part of my letter that I have, Mark, I'll get you this copy. "I strongly disagree that in their narrative from the application, in support of all the divergence requests that this applicant has," and I quote, "they've tried multiple approaches to minimize the number of divergence requests. And this is our absolute best effort to minimize it while still maintaining what we feel is a congruent, compatible, aesthetically pleasing development for the site we can all be proud of." So I won't get into stuff as far as aesthetically pleasing and compatible or congruent, because that has nothing to do with our zoning. Our zoning does have to do with the codes that we have, and this site here only has .71 acres of developable property, when you take the right-of-way areas and stuff out of it. In Article 12 of our zoning resolution, under the planned commercial districts, it says "The intended purposes of Section 1201 for the planned commercial district specifically states that the district is limited to areas served by central sewer wastewater treatment plants." This site is not. Section 11201.01 goes on to say that "it is the policy of the township below in Letter A to preserve and extend the charm and beauty existent in the rural residential character of Genoa Township." Rural residential zoning has a two-acre minimum lot requirement, and normally a 75-foot setback from right-of-way. That's our rural residential character. This parcel has only .71 acres. That's a big issue. And here they only ask for a one-foot setback when we require rural residential houses to be 75 feet off? That's almost a 99% divergence. Letter B underneath that article in 1201 says that "it's also the policy of the township to provide economic and social advantages resulting from an orderly planned use of large parcels of land." Once again, this parcel only has .71 acres, which is a big issue, and only parcels of five acres in size are to be applied to the planned commercial district. A very concerning divergence, as far as acreage-wise. Letter C in our zoning states that "it's the policy of the township to provide more useful pattern of open space in recreation areas." None of these are provided because of this .71 acre site. Once again, this is a big issue. There's no open space with this building being placed even five feet from the right-of-way area. There's no walking trails connecting the intersection and the roundabout to McNamara Park. This zoning and the text provided should be denied. Safety is a major concern, as you should not place any building that close to the road where traffic has an opportunity of striking it in an accident. And to the trustees, as the leader of our township, I ask you, how close is the township office building to the right-of-way areas in the southeast corner? How close is the house at 7641 Big Walnut Road from the right-of-way in the northeast corner? How close is the house at 5122 Old 3C Highway from the right-of-way areas of the roundabout in the southwest corner? And why were these questions never asked or answered by any members of our zoning commission? A lot of serious issues on this site that need to be considered. And from what I've seen and all the stuff that Joe said as far as branching over this stuff, I think it's a very hard decision to make in one evening with that list of divergences and stuff. Each one could probably take 10, 15 minutes of discussion. I appreciate your time, let me speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you take?
I'll get up and take the stand. Michael Irwin, 8330 Big Walnut Road. I agree with the former speaker, I was going to raise a lot of the issues that he brought, and I can just say that he did a very good job on explaining what the defects are. What you're essentially trying to do here is force a square peg into a round hole, and I'm opposed to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll take the mic.
Can you take him the mic?
Mark Stelter, 7731 Big Walnut Road. I know you don't want to address aesthetics or anything like that, but I do have a concern on the safety side, why the main entrance to this building is on Big Walnut Road. You know, it would seem to me you would want it right off that parking lot on the west side of the building. You know, bad weather, you know, rain, heavy rain, snow, whatever, somebody parked or down at the end, they gotta walk all the way around, plus the fact that, you know, you're so close to the road anyways, it's a concern. Another item I have a concern about is this storage space above the offices. I mean, what kind of storage do you need? And if there's multiple tenants, is the area above the offices that's going to be used for storage, are you going to frame those off so each tenant would have their own little storage space? And how's that safe? Or, you know, I don't know if it's going to be sprinkled or whatever. And then, you know, it looks like there's one ADA parking space, which is, you know, by code probably all that's needed. The concern I would have is you're going to have a client possibly that's going to park there, but you also may have tenants working in the building that need ADA parking. So maybe you need more spaces like that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, now maybe you're all going to hear me, because I promised to put my mouth right on this thing. By the way, really, it's a problem, you can't hear what's going on. Maybe you guys can, because at least they're going in your direction, but I'm back here wondering, I'm one back here wondering what they're talking about. Okay, just, my name's Bill Anders, just for the road here. Lived in Genoa Township for 46 years. 10 years was right by the old township hall over here, right near the side of the field that looked right across into Booth's General Store. And that's what was there when I was here, is the Booth's General Store. And the field between my house and the general store, it was just farm field. The train was still going up and down 3C there, you know, you'd have to stop for the train and all that good stuff. So it's changed quite a bit, but I also have seen this area, it's still sort of rural. Hate to say anything, but it's going to change the rural atmosphere of this place. I've been to hundreds of trustee meetings and zoning meetings, it was on the BZA. The zoning code is very important for protecting Genoa's citizens and needed to be followed. Common sense was the norm, not the exception. Now, the new role of the zoning department has caused major issues for the citizens of Genoa and even the folks that might be, might request special zoning. The zoning folks almost always take the side of the variance-seeking applicants and those that need special zoning. They will shepherd, and Joe sure talked a lot, didn't he? They will shepherd the issue trying to make the applicant happy. Instead of being blunt and upholding the code and common sense and simply saying their request is ridiculous, then try to make everyone happy. The issue should never have gotten to this point, knowing the influence of the zoning department can have, just a second. Let me take the top page, get the rest of it, okay. There's influence, I mean, I was the board of zoning appeals, now I watch the zoning board. The building department in Genoa does have an influence on those two boards, and there's no question, it's educational, our full-time job is in zoning, although we got pretty intelligent about it after a while, but they influence the boards. I just, I look at all these things, and I go, how the dickens does something like this get through when it's that so complicated? Anything that is built on this site has to be appealing, as it is a rural residential area. The building has to be backed from the roadway and have appropriate bushes, trees, landscaping. Let's see, no O's building, they're joining, I don't know, looking at this, I'm going, you know, you really should have, yeah, you have trees in the far west side and the far east side, but the main building is facing Big Walnut, doesn't have any trees or anything because it's so close, it's right on the right-of-way. It's right on the right-of-way. There's, I often think what Mr. Whelan just said, you know, you're trying to fit, or somebody else said, a round peg in a square hole or vice versa. You're trying to fit an awful lot into .71 acres. My front yard, if my house, is about one acre, and if we just have a party with our family comes over, there's barely room for parking, much less, it's totally full. There is no, there is nothing you can do, the whole area is filled up immediately. And this site here, I just look at it and I go, gosh, you know, you're going on Long Big Walnut, it's going to look more like a commercial site, not a rural residential By the way, the septic system really bothers me, I know a lot about the septic stuff. When you've been driving for years and years, that was the parking lot for the, well, the Booth's place, the two lawn and garden places that were in there, it's all stone, it's, somebody can tell you, do you have actual plan that's approved from the health department with a septic site in there? Does anybody have it? The actual plan, not talking, not cutesy talking, I'm talking about trying to get that approved for septic. I don't think it's going to be. It's been compacted, compacted, who knows all the junk that may have been thrown out in there over 100 years. I don't think there's a septic available here, you're going to have to go to a sewer or something. That's not going to pass, from my experience. Let's see, what else we got here? Just a minute, okay. Now, this site and what they're doing, it should be beautiful. It should be really striking, just like the homes are around there, they're well-kept, they're nice, they're neat, and then you're going to have this building that, you know, this commercial building, you can't even put a block up for landscaping or anything. I just don't get how that fits the area and doesn't fit any kind of setback or anything. There is no setback. Although I did realize when you were first referred, talking about parking, if you don't do certain things, if you gotta move some things around, you don't have enough parking at all, because you just don't have it, it's too small an area. You can't put a lot of cars in there if you wanted to. It's, I don't know how many spaces are actually there, but there sure doesn't look like there's room for hardly any. Okay. By the way, I said the septic system shouldn't be built, and you know it's going to fail sooner, a lot sooner than later, and that's the situation. There's, okay, now I'm going, I'll go with all this, just hang on here, I'll try to read it and not talk. I start talking, that's a bad habit. I won't go into all the issues that have been repeated, so I'm not going to be redundant, but putting a block building right next to the roadway is, and I said, ugly, ugly, ugly. Right on the roadway, not, no setbacks, no nothing. Here's a, here's a commercial building, I don't know, wherever I go and I find new buildings being built right on, I don't know anywhere where new buildings are being built right on the right-of-way, except here, in a rural residential area, in a residential area, and you're going to put something that ugly, it's not fair to the citizens that lived here, they invested their place and wasted money on their house and everything. You gotta get a design where you put it back where it belongs. I heard it was going to be made of cinder block, and the thing I heard was that that would be a better safety thing for the people that are working inside the building. Well, how about the people in the car that hit the cinder block? You know, that's right, just right on the right-of-way. I mean, it's right there, you only travel 23, 40 feet before you hit the building. It's a health and safety issue, as far as I'm concerned. Is he alone, or is it going to be, just a second here? Let's see. Does a applicant, I mean, the applicant was caring about people inside the building if a car hit it. How about the people in the car? I mean, that seems to be exclusively not mentioned. You talk about landscaping, but it's exclusively not mentioned for all the people that are around here. There's no, yeah, there's no pedestrian paths anywhere. See, I'm making more money. Really, the issue is, is this the right property for everything that wants to get put on it? And you're trying to jam it all together and do it in a real small bunch of, small footprint, you make more money that way perhaps, but it's not going to be real pleasant to live Just a second, I'm not going to be redundant. I mean, don't, trustees, don't worry, don't mess up the current residence, the current's resident pleasure of, you know, look outside and see some rural residential. Instead, put those buildings back in. I mean, again, I guess if you put them back where they wouldn't be seen by hardly anybody, then you don't have enough parking or something. I mean, you're trying to wedge something in here, and I think Rick said .71 acres, that it just doesn't really fit without people who already live here making the sacrifice. Should have just read this. I just say, I drive by, I used to live right here. I mean, I was over at Booth's General Store, we played in the field with kids, that was just a place to go, visit lawn and garden, you go and visit, see the tractors or something. So I've been around this, and it was rural residential. Now it's not going to feel anything like that, and it's not going to be landscaped like that, and I'm not sure you can put it there because of septic, then you have to go back to the health department and start all that routine. So I can't believe you're actually here getting, running to get approval when you don't have approval even from about the septic. Let's see, I'll write, frankly, just driving by this, I had to live near the side of the reservoir now, but just driving by this would make me sick every single day, which you did this, and here's a building, you're driving right next to the pavement, right next to your car. You gotta redo this stuff, this thing just looks atrocious. Now, I got a few comments that were made before. I guess, why so close to the road? I was going to ask that question. I think the answer came up, it was parking, wasn't it? Just a second, I made some notes here. I got my secretary, keep going, back to the other ones, other page. I got my secretary getting confused, just a minute here. Okay, it's on a white piece of paper. Okay. Did you say something about a State Farm agency or an insurance agency?
This is not dialogue.
Okay, I just, I couldn't hear anything. They come in and rent from her, I can't, since I had a pretty large insurance agency, it did commercial employee benefits and everything, I can tell you, we would use a lot of that lot of just people coming in and coming out and everything, and it wasn't a personal lines agency, it was mostly all business. So let's just push some more cars and property in there. I'm not sure Joe said something, I mean, I didn't hear him right. It'd be better for administering zoning if this was approved. Did he say something like that, Joe? Well.
We'll track your comments.
I just couldn't figure that out. Oh, and if I'm driving up Old 3C right now, it feels very rural. It doesn't feel like there's commercial buildings or a barn, isn't making it feel like this is going to make me feel. Totally different situation. And also, as one that's handicapped now... And also, as one that's handicapped now, thanks for the surgeon, the one that's handicapped now, having one, one or two handicapped places for that, you have to have a van that unload jet, my wife pulls up, the doors go open, she flips the ramp down, you know, automatically. You could have some space to do all that. And if you have two or three handicapped people, I mean, you aren't gonna be able to get out of your car. It's just simply, there's not enough room, there's not enough room for the, for the, for the number of cars you might have, much less a handicap ramp to get in and out. And I'm not sure if you can, if you can build, get around the buildings and get in the other building correctly. So I just don't, personally, I just don't think this is the right, the right fit, the way it's been put together, regardless of everybody's patting themselves on the back. I don't think that's the right fit, and it's ugly for the neighborhood, and it's ugly for Genoa, and it's gotta be reworked. I mean, it just, plus there's a health and safety thing. If it's so bad close to the road, you're gonna make the building out of block, doesn't that show it's a hazard? And you should think of the health and safety issues here, putting a roadway right next to the building. So that's enough for now.
All right, thank you.
May I ask a question? I did not sign in.
Name?
Shirley Anders. 3501.
Sunbury Road. Is it? Can you hear me?
Did you swear in?
I did not. I just, can I have one? Just a quick, have they considered purchasing?
Hold on.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth, God be God.
So help me God, yes. I have a question. Would it be possible?
And then your name and address.
Okay, Shirley Anders, 3501, Sunbury Road, Galena, Ohio. Would it be possible for them to purchase the home next door and property to make this all work?
Is that your question?
Is that, is that?
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
All right, well, we can address that. Can you put the microphone back?
Thank you.
You run it off. Okay, so here you have a chance to respond, whether it's a block building. And I think there was a question about insurance.
There was a lot of things in there, I'll try to recall them all. As far as the Health Department and the septic system is concerned, keep in mind, that's a relatively new septic system.
Can you turn the, I mean, are the speakers all the way up?
The problem is if we turn the speakers up, the audio recording.
Yeah. Just put it right in your mouth. You don't have to put it in your mouth. Just speak into the microphone.
So I'll start over. Speaking to the septic system, keep in mind that it's a very new septic system as it relates to all of the other development of the property previously. I believe it was put in in 08, 12 years ago, in that vicinity. We have worked with the Health Department extensively, they've been out there multiple times, and we have submitted documentation that, that this has met their criteria to this. I think that that has been put to rest as much as it can be put to rest at this point. We are extraordinarily landlocked, there is no doubt about it. We looked at multiple iterations of what we could do with the property, and there's really just about one way that it can go because of the setback from septic, because of the setback from easements, because of the, the structure of the, of the building and needing it to be adjacent to the parking lot. And there's just, there's not a lot of wiggle room. And so ultimately, the, the property is designed this way because this is about the only way that it can go. As far as the construction itself, the building material, this is a crude way of explaining it, but it's my understanding as a medical provider and not a person who builds buildings, it is essentially a PVC pipe type of material on the exterior, not cinder block, that is treated such that it has UV protection, so it's not going to yellow, it will stay a white building, very easy to clean and maintain. We can just power wash it, it should never have to be painted. It will have a metal roof. The, the wall construction on the other side of the PVC pipe is a concrete-based product called Secrete. And a large part of the purpose for that for us is sound. And being able to keep the traffic noise down, we are providing, you know, psychotherapy in the offices. We want to be able to have a quiet area, and so a lot of, a lot of that goal is sound. Does it provide a protective barrier as well? Absolutely, absolutely. That is a very solid wall, and so in the event that there is traffic that has gone off of the road and hits the building, they're not going to come into the building. No, it's, they're not coming in, they will do damage potentially to the building, certainly damage to their car, but they're not coming in. And that was a factor that we considered when we were looking at building on this property. And actually, at the time that we were pursuing the property and, and going through the process of closing, we were, we knew that a roundabout was coming, but we didn't know it was going to come this soon. And so we were making our decision based on a continued four-way stop. I've personally watched people run that stop sign, and so I know that that is an issue. And one of the things that we considered early on before we ultimately chose this builder and this type of construction was putting in, you know, large concrete planters or something, you know, to keep distance and obstruction between the road and, and the building. That's not an issue at this point because we're, we're choosing to construct the building such that we don't need to provide an alternative barrier there. As far as parking, we have, I believe, above what is necessary as far as parking requirement for the size of our building. We did that for a couple of reasons. One primarily, primary one being that we're, we're landlocked, right? There is no overflow, there's nowhere to go, you cannot park on Big Walnut, you cannot park on Old 3C. And so we want to make sure that under any and all circumstances with however people are coming and going from the office, that we have adequate parking, and I do believe that that is the case. And we have also met criteria and are not asking for any divergences related to handicap parking. As far as the State Farm comment that I made, no, I do not have a State Farm agent planning to, to move in my, that was an example of the, the fact that at this point, my, my plan is to bring in other psychiatric professionals, the people that I have personally met with and have spoken with about their intentions to lease from me are all psychiatric professionals. What I had stated was that ultimately, the building needs to rent. And, and so I am open to other types of businesses, but with the understanding that we have the parking that we have, we want a quiet footprint. We don't want a lot of people coming and going for multiple reasons. One, because we don't want that kind of traffic in the office in general, based on my own practice alone. And also because we actually do very much respect that this is in a residential community. We, I live in this residential community, and we want to keep it that way. And one of the reasons that we chose the engineering firm that we did, Structure Point, is because they are also the engineering firm that is doing the roundabout. And that was important because one of the things that we have worked with Structure Point with, within those divisions and, and different projects is that the, the initial drawings that were brought to me made the parking lot right turn only out of there, which, which is a significant problem, right? Because then that pretty much demands that someone is going to turn right and then need to turn around to go back the opposite direction. And so what we've worked on with, with Delaware is providing a pass-through through that roundabout so that we are able to have people exiting to the east and west on the property. And so I feel that we have been very much residential-minded when we've looked at this property and looked at how we want to develop it, understanding that we are very landlocked just as far as the positioning of, of the building. And I think that it is aesthetically pleasing to have the entrance of the building toward a Big Walnut. Initially, we had a plan where the, the entrance of the building was actually on the north end. And I don't think that that is a good idea for multiple reasons, but this, this is where we've arrived at, and I, I don't know how to do it differently.
Very good. Anything else?
Couple of things. The septic, where it is and how it's laid out, there's really no other area on the property that's undisturbed that you could put a new septic system in. So it was very critical that we get approval from Health that the septic system's going to work. So we've done remediation work, we've done testing, make sure the affluent runs to the mound, and going to remediate the full system. But we, just last week, heard from Health that they're good with the test results we've given them and that we can get to completion, that this system will pass and support the use of the building. The building materials themselves is an insulated concrete form. It's an extruded PVC, but when it's finished, it will look very much like a white Borden-Batten-type barn-type look. So it will have somewhat of that rural feel, not a commercial concrete block building. So it should be very aesthetically pleasing to the community. It would be a much better view for Joe out of his office than what was there before. Where our proposed location of the building is, is actually further off of the roadway than where the previous building was. So even though it is a divergence in asking for a one-foot setback, it's really about 40 feet from the road when you look at the right of way and the green space that will be there. I'm trying to think some other comments that were made. It's a professional office space, so it is, like Mindy said, they don't want a lot of traffic. You know, it wants to be a cozy feel, right? A relaxing feel. I don't know, what other, were there anything else that you wanted to address that came from public comments? Okay, all right.
I think the other question, I guess, that had been asked was about acquiring the property next door. I have a finite amount of money, right? I am not a developer. I am just a nurse practitioner who's seeking to build my practice close to home. And so there, there has to be a, an ability to generate revenue off of any acquisition. And so I think acquiring the property next door really doesn't, doesn't work out. The math isn't there to make that a viable option for us.
And one last thing I would say is on the impact. It is planned commercial district, so if you were gonna have a commercial building there that looks like a barn in, in a way, you know, a modern farmhouse, top look, and the impact couldn't be really less than just individual clients with a professional space. It's, you know, hourly consulting or whatever. It's about as low as impact as you can in, in a relatively busy intersection that we all know. And the sound works both ways. It protects, it doesn't, it's not gonna exude sound because of the walls, but it's also, you know, it keeps it quiet in there. But it should be, you know, if this corner ever got developed for anything, I don't know how much better it could be if it is gonna be a commercial development than it is to fit into a rural residential neighborhood, also considering the fact that it is planned commercial district. It's not, we're not asking to turn a house that was rural residential into a commercial space. That's, that's what it is, even though it's just now coming in front of that. And I think, to me, it looks a heck of a lot better than the historical but now gone building that was there. And, you know, I think it will improve, and it, it does match a lot of the other commercial properties in there, but still tries to blend in with the rural residential. Thank you.
I want to make one more comment about the roundabout. I live up near the peanut-shaped roundabout on 61 and 656. Before the roundabout went in, there were accidents with ambulances, life flights, every week. That roundabout went in, I don't know, over a year ago, maybe almost two years ago now. I have not seen one accident since that roundabout went in. It has slowed the flow of traffic, it's really controlled things. So I think having that peanut roundabout will alleviate a lot of the accidents that do happen out at this intersection. Which I think makes the building safe.
Okay. At this point, we'll take it to the board for discussion. Anybody volunteer to start?
I will. All right. We'll start with an easy one. It says in here that you have two pole-mounted light fixtures in the parking lot. Will they be lit 24/7? Downward lighting when they are lit? Can you tell us what they're gonna be?
All the lighting met the requirements to be down light or on control timer, so it's never, and none of the light also, there was a light study done that shows nothing bleeds off of the site into someone else's property.
Okay.
So it's downward, it won't bleed off-site, it meets the candle requirements, and it's on a control timer to make sure that it's not on in any times that it's not supposed to be on.
So can you tell me what those times that it's not supposed to be might be?
It's in the text, but.
I missed it.
I'll have to find it, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
And I won't be able to find it quickly.
That's, that's okay. My concern is that when your offices are closed, and I don't know what your business hours are going to be exactly, but those lights would not be necessary, in my mind, if the, if the business is not open. And I wouldn't want those lights to impact surrounding residences, which would be a change from just the monument sign that had been there previously. Can you assure us that those lights will not be on overnight, that they will not be on if the offices are closed?
Yes, and they'll be, they would be able to be adjusted if there was anything. But the signage to meet the requirements, that it said the signage will be controlled by automatic controls, including time and daylight settings to be illuminated between 6:00 AM and 11:59 PM, provided not shut off by daylight sensors. So, and the signs, the signs as well as the parking lot lights or building lights, that's what it was set to be. I don't, I don't think our owner intends for them to be in there probably after 9:00, but she'd have to answer that. But they could be adjusted down, it was just made to comply with what the zoning requirement was. And there's no divergence for any lighting. None of it leaves the site. When it's on, it's only on during the posted, the hours it's supposed to be. And it could be adjusted if there was any concern, because it's gonna be on, it's gonna have overrides at dual control of daylight settings to not be on, if it doesn't need to be on. And if it is on, it's only gonna be allowed to be on during the times that it's allowed to be for zoning.
Okay. Personally, I'm a little concerned with 11:59. I doubt you're going to be there seeing clientele at that point, but, you know, I think that that's a point that could be discussed. The driveway that goes in and out, I'm very concerned about that with the roundabout that's going in. As I look at it, in order to get into your parking lot, and you mentioned a pass-through, which I don't understand that one yet, so hold off. But as I look at this, in order, if you're coming from the west, you would need to go around the entire roundabout and then make a right turn in. If you are exiting your parking lot, you could only make a right turn and then would have to somewhere turn around to go back east.
Yeah, you essentially, you have a right in, right out.
Yeah. And my concern is that that's gonna take significant signage, correspondence with your clients to say, here's how you get to us. Don't be making left turns over that barrier. You know, and that, that troubles me. So go ahead, I can.
So, so we have been working with, with Delaware County to put in, can I just come up and point on the?
Take the mic with you.
Okay. So we have been working with Delaware County to put a pass-through right here. So that it, it would not be right turn only to leave, right? So there would be a pass-through in which case, and, and that happens in roundabouts. That's, that's not something that we would be designing only for, for us. There are other roundabouts that have pass-throughs.
The roundabout up by me has two cutouts on each.
For driveways.
For driveways to get in and out, yes. So you can turn right or left.
We'd want something more substantial than your verbiage convincing us.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg.
That is correct, that is a chicken and egg situation. That is a chicken and egg situation. They don't want to put anything, they, they wanted us to come to them with our approval so that they would then draw that in. That, that is correct.
But to be clear, we can't guarantee what a future roundabout, Structure Point designed this roundabout, it's set probably the next two years. We have to, I mean, we have to design with all the best knowledge now. We can't guarantee what the engineers will do, but from our discussions, they will put a pass-through very similar to what Bill talked about in the double peanut. It's the same exact design from what was talked about on that one, because we had actually even shared that. And that is been submitted to the Delaware engineer as Structure Point has talked about that to it. It's just they're not going to guarantee anything on a future roundabout for our current development, especially without our zoning. Right, but we don't need a guarantee. We just want confirmation that this is a real thing, because right now you're just telling us, and that doesn't, that doesn't help.
Can I, I, I reached out to the engineer's office just to validate that your drawings of the roundabout were accurate. They are accurate. I didn't even ask this question, but I got a reply today from Will, and he said that they had, we have instructed them that we will not be doing a curb cut through the splinter island as it would remove the majority of that island. That's what, so they're saying no.
So there's no pass-through?
That, that's what I read from this, which is what I just got this aft, late this afternoon.
It's a real concern to me that if that, well, I have two concerns. If it does happen, and, and I go through the one you're talking about on 656 and 61 three times a week. My daughter lives up in Moore County, so I get it. I don't think I've ever seen those driveways, so they're pretty inconspicuous. But the, what, one person going in and out of their driveway, you know, maybe twice, maybe four times a day is very different from the kind of traffic that a business will generate. And so I'm concerned that that's, it's a dangerous thing going in and out of there when, when cars are going in a roundabout. Granted, they're going slower sometimes. And in a peanut, I know you have to go slower, even I do. So that, you do not, or you do. I, I do go slower, and they all know me, so. But that concerns me a great deal without that pass-through, and it concerns me with it. That, that driveway is just not, in my mind, in the right place. But I also understand that the property you're working with is very challenging. You know, in a perfect world, the county would have taken that whole piece of property.
I know.
They wouldn't have left less than what it was, because it was not enough to start with. But that ship has sailed, and we're stuck with what we now have. But I'm very, very concerned about that driveway and its placement.
Let me also, on that same, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead. No, no, you're fine.
Take your microphone.
Also showing a right in, right out, right here, would indicate that you're sharing that's access for them, but it's a right out here.
Yeah, so, so the roundabout design was done before we did our work, right? So we superimposed these two together with Structure Point. The roundabout has not been redesigned. When it comes time to start that project, they will address those points. Now, the information that they will not do the cutout is troublesome, I will say, because when we first proposed that, they were like, yeah, that makes sense, because we've already got that. It will get rid of a majority of the splinter. I can, I could see where, where that driveway is. It would remove a good section of the, the splinter. Again, I think when they get to really doing that, that splinter can be extended. But again, those are just words, right? But they're not going to want to build something that is restrictive for access for people that live around the roundabout. That just isn't how they normally do business. So you said Will at the engineer's office?
I printed it, but I left it on the printer at home.
Yeah.
So, Will Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, I know Will Ferguson.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think, I think no is an easy answer, right? It's easy to say no.
We're not going to resolve this, excuse me, we're not going to resolve this tonight here.
We're not.
This is just an issue that we need to consider.
Yep.
Do you have anything else?
I'm done.
Yeah. Oh, you're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Mine's, real quick, one, we've already talked about, this is a note about here, the primary business will be your practice, and we don't know what the other uses are going to be. I don't need you to address it, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I also noticed you, there was a Phase 1 that was done in 2009, which a lot could have happened from 2009 till now, especially considering the operation that was there. And that Phase 1 also recommended a Phase 2.
You're talking sewer?
I'm sorry.
Septic? Are you talking septic?
No, this is just environmental.
Oh, okay.
Contaminated soils primarily because of the use that was there. I wanted to bring that to your attention. Maybe your bank doesn't care whether there's contaminated soils, but this report from 2009 does recommend a Phase 2. They're, then they only do that when there's concerns about contamination?
The limited Phase 2 was done, and we submitted that paperwork.
It's not in here. That's fine, it's just not.
Provided the packet that we were given, so.
Yeah. And then, I think we've already beat that dead horse, but again, on the septic, I have the same concerns. I have, I have no information here that this septic is adequate. And there also is no, I don't see any area designated for a reserve, which is commonly required by the health department. That same area that's approved for your existing, there has to be space for reserve in case this one fails. And these are the kind of things that would be addressed in a more formal approval from the health department, which I haven't seen an approval from your health department either.
We have a conditional approval.
I, I just haven't seen it.
I'm sorry. Yep. And it's an existing, so it's, this is an existing system, so usually when you're designing one, it's, here's two spots that will work for that, but if you have an existing, there's already one there.
Yeah, my question is, where is the reserve? They require you to set aside a reserve to not be disturbed for a future in case that one fails or ages out. The fact that we're having this discussion is evidence that you need to provide us more information. I don't have, I'm not, I don't have a comfort level that this septic system is going to work for you.
Mr.?
And you need to provide it to us.
Chairman, if I may, I, it wasn't included in the packet for some reason that I saw, but we did get copied on a letter from the Delaware Public Health District dated June And it's there, regarding the addition remodel application for new building tied into existing septic system, they marked in their little box, "Okay to proceed with zoning slash building permit, but with conditions noted as attached to be corrected prior to the final occupancy inspection." And there's conditions for approval on the next page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, about a dozen or so conditions. I'm going to spare us reading all of them, but that, that was the letter. I guess I assumed it was in the packet, which is why I didn't forward it to the board, and I didn't realize it was not in the packet. So they do have a letter from the health district saying that they're generally okay with the system noting that there are improvements that are going to have to be made prior to occupancy.
And we've, we've done some testing and some different remediations since that letter, and they've been back out, and we just got that report Friday, I think it was.
It was a sanitarian field report and the office report also, the person in charge at the office also has gave, there was a conditional approval permit issued, which was provided. Since then, we did remedial testing of that per their recommendations, and they had the sanitarian come out and check that as well as they reviewed the paperwork to make sure it was all within tolerances, but per the calculations of the old plan and the, and the new occupancy. And she gave us the thumbs up to go ahead and do that, and I think they just issued that. I don't, I don't know if that's even been forwarded, but that just, we just got that.
Have a comment on that? I've reached out to the health district because I have concerns with the building being so close to the road, and I kept hearing there isn't any other place to put this. I understand that has to be undisturbed. The permit or the original design was approved for a square-ish, your existing septic here and the replacement right next to it, so it created a square or rectangle. It was installed linearly along the western portion of the property. So there is undisturbed. You have your existing, the replacement is just to the north of it, parallel. They're both undisturbed.
So they identified that as the...
Yes. This is from Dustin Kent from the health district. Yes, shared that information.
Then there was township staff sent a copy of the plans to county engineer's office to provide them an opportunity to flag any issues. No responses. Been received that the date of this memorandum, has that changed traffic?
No, but it sounds like trustee Vaughn got a response in regards to that, the access restriction. That was generally, I wanted to make sure, did their plan actually match out with the roundabout design initially? And then their, America, Structure Point testified that they're designing the roundabout for the county, and they're also designing this plan. So they said that we have the drawings on file in our office because we're the ones doing the design. So that was the assurance they provided that, yes, this drawing is going to match out with the roundabout because they're doing the design for essentially both projects.
But I also reached out to the engineer's office, and they confirmed the roundabout design on their plans are accurate.
Okay.
And we have in our office, Paul and I are going to look at it probably tomorrow, the right-of-way acquisition papers for our corner that we're going to have to eventually sort through and bring to the board. Obviously, it's a separate matter, but, so we'll be able to, we would catch any of those inconsistencies on that.
Okay. Joe, this might be for you. I don't, I'm not sure I understand about the potential for Big Walnut Road multi-use trail, but we're not going to request an easement along Big Walnut?
So normally, in these developments, we would require either a sidewalk or a multi-use path along all their frontages, or in lieu of the code allows them, instead of building it, to provide us just an easement for us to go do it at a later date. Obviously, we don't need that along South Old 3C. It's already there. They're proposing, because of the site layout, to not provide it along Big Walnut Road, because there's essentially, with their improvements, there's no room for it. And then what I was trying to paint the picture of was, the township was looking at trying to get funding of building it ourselves, even, I think, before, either parallel with or even before this application came in, we were talking about securing state funding to try to just build it ourselves. Because we, we've identified that the north side of Big Walnut Road from the South Old 3C Trail to the Genoa Trail is a key sort of missing east-west link. It'd be nice to not have to go all the way up to like McNamara Park or Vinmar Farms to go across. So, like I said, the funding was not successful, so we're back to sort of square one on that issue. But the applicant is, is proposing to not provide any of those easements again because of how close they are to the road. There's no room for that trail system to go in. I was just trying to point out that because the township owns Big Walnut Road, I'm less concerned about getting that easement, I guess, because, while it would be nice for the applicant to build it and save the township money from having to build it itself, by and large, aside from topo, acquiring the land to build those improvements is usually one of the biggest challenges we have in building them. It's less of an issue here as long as the county wouldn't have a concern with it. But given that we've already got that path along Old 3C, I'd like to think if the township ever wanted to do something in the right-of-way in terms of pedestrian improvements, that it wouldn't be an issue.
All right, so they could go in the right-of-way.
I would think so. I'm, I'm not the final authority person who says yes on that, but I would like to think we could since it's, you know? Unless we trade Big Walnut Road at some point, it's our right-of-way, I would think. I don't know how far, where the county control ends and our control begins, though, with this roundabout design. That's, that's an unknown to me.
I think it looks like most all of the issues have been resolved. The ones that can't be resolved have been identified as divergences. But there's a comment here about divergence 1208.01, and you have noted, Joe, the requested clarification was made in development text, but also needs to be included in the list of divergences document.
It's just a piece of information that appears in one portion of the application, but not another portion of the application, so I have no concerns. It's just about making the information, both of those places where it appears, completely consistent. So it's, it's more of a polished presentation matter than a compliance issue.
The only thing I would ask is, if, from what I understand, the zoning commission in evaluating this application was provided alternative site plans? Is that correct?
We talked through quite a bit of different options with the zoning commission, and we put together a buildable area on the land, and it was a very small triangle that ended up being kind of where the parking lot north end is. Yeah, up in that area. And it was just...
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Apologies.
No, please, go ahead.
I just got a quick question, which might impact how this thing lays out, and that is, why would you, are you asking for five more parking spots than required by code? And I don't understand what this whole stuff is up here.
Turnaround.
Just taking up space.
Turnaround, there was concern with the commission that needed to be able to turn around to get back out.
Kind of like Jay, what was that one, the multi-sound studio where, you know, where, where are they going to turn around if all those spots are full?
So those spaces and large rectangles that are hatched out there in the north of that accessory building was additional parking spaces, and when that concern got raised, the applicant opted just to hatch those out so to get to the end of that parking row, yeah, some space to maneuver and turn around. Sort of, also similar to sort of the concern that got raised with the parking row.
So I think the concern was that if you pulled into the parking lot and all the spots were taken, how do I turn around? Yeah, don't want to back out onto the road.
I, I think for the public must understand that this is not a rezone from rural residential. And that, that changes this whole analysis, that these, these setbacks are not unreasonable because of the nature of the parcel. And I would refer back to J.C. Manny, who had the same issue, was, it was planned for that use, but the part, the, the size of the partial, parcel required some significant setback divergences, which is fair. The, the, the fortunate part of this one is, at least the parcel to the north is also zoned, planned commercial. So the only one, the only parcel that it's adjacent to on the residential is to the west, right? Which is bespoke.
On this side of the road, correct.
Yeah. So it, it cannot be developed without some divergences on setbacks, which is, I mean, drive, the divergences are all driven, primarily driven by setbacks, which drives the divergences on landscaping, and it's just based on fit. The question is, is this the best fit? And I personally would like to see other alternatives. I do have concerns about the building being essentially five feet off the right-of-way. You, you essentially have your sidewalk right up against the right-of-way, and then the building offset from that. So there essentially isn't even landscaping between the building and your, your access sidewalk, and that does concern me. Input from the others?
Yes, I have quite a bit. I will start with storage. You have a exterior storage that is existing, and then you have a whole second level of storage. And for just six offices, what will the second story, uh, storage be used for?
You're, you're correct. The off-site will be, or the, I'm sorry, that second to build...
You're, you're correct. The off-site will be, or the, I'm sorry, that second building will be more for lawn care, you know, building maintenance, those types of things. The upstairs will be for tenants who are coming in who did not go to electronic charting, who have a lot of patient files and things that they're obligated to keep for a number of years. And so that is what I foresee, most of the storage being right out of the gate. And then the floor will just give us the ability to get into the cupola and change light fixtures and such.
Okay. The traffic study says that it will be low impact during peak hours. I've gone into detail about the exact numbers, but not knowing what other tenants will rent the space, how do you know what your impact is going to be at peak hours? Like I, I don't understand the reasoning there, justification for the traffic study and how that was compiled. Can anybody speak to that?
I don't know the answer as far as the, the traffic study. Maybe Bill or Mark can speak to that. As, as far as peak hours, certainly no one's going to be there overnight. And so I do think that there will be people like me who prefer to work early in the morning. If I have a patient who wants to be seen at 7:00 a.m. before work, even 6:30, 6:00 a.m., I'm all for that. I'd rather be done in the day. There are others. I have two therapists who want to come in who have small children and who will wait for their husbands to get home from work and who will be seeing their clientele largely in the evening time up to 9:00 p.m. And so I don't know that we're going to have a peak time period, so to speak, but I do think that it, it's just more low volume over a steady course of the day. There will be weekend access as well to the building.
Back to the traffic study in the roundabout, since the firm is also completing the roundabout, was the right-of-way prediction and, and space for this roundabout, was the 70, possible 71 Big Walnut interchange traffic included in this proposed road? And the anticipation of Big Walnut Road eventually being widened?
Yes. The plan for the roundabout is, uh, has a longevity prediction of 20 to 50 years of traffic flow.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, divergences, I, I listened to the two previous zoning commission hearings. I know there was talk of pushing the building back to the lot. I know there were other designs that were proposed. One of my reasons for reaching out to the Health District was I wanted to see if it would be possible to move this design, for instance, moving the building towards the back of the lot and maybe the parking lot towards the front. I needed to know if that was even possible. Uh, I think it is based on the information that I was given. According to the information that Dustin Kent gave me, the only part that needs to remain untouched is the whole western border of the property. But it looks like the rest of it is fair game, which means I think there, there are other better designs out there for this parcel. I love the building. I, I, I like the low impact of your business. I just think the location is unsafe. I mean, that's clear with a lot of the comments this evening. I know that the staff report talked about that there are other homes in the township that are close to the property lines and in the road, but those were built at a time where kids could ride their bike down to Westerville. We hear that. So that's what used to be built. But I think with the amount of traffic and congestion and, and us grow, um, almost being built out, I don't think it's smart to build a building that close to two major roads in our townships, in our township. I do think that, you know, pushing this back in, in the lot, I know that there are homes here to the west and to the north. But in my opinion, again, the design of your building, it's a rural feel, barn, home-like. Only 2,400 square feet, which I think will be less square footage than a lot of the homes that are going to be built on the new L-shaped. So it's going to have a lesser footprint. So it doesn't bother me that you're pushing it back in, in your lot. Uh, Joe also mentioned that they used to allow signs in the right-of-way. They don't anymore. I think that's yet another justification to push this building back. Yes, it was done at one time in Genoa Township, but as, as we change and evolve and grow in population, I think it's better to push it off the roadway. And we talked about the construction of the building. And how you even took that into consideration with the, the impact of the road. And, and you did it for safety. And, and our comprehensive plan talks about the rural feel. A lot of the reasons we have the setbacks, I understand you, you still may have divergences if you move the building to the back. I'm willing, I, I would have less of a concern with divergences with the building in the back of the lot than I do with the building in the front of the lot. I, I, I know that this is a difficult piece of property. That's already been discussed. I understand that. And then also with the landscape plan, you know, one of the reasons we have the Hoover watershed overlay is to protect our, the rural feel, the Hoover watershed. So I would like to see you come closer to meeting our landscape design. Whether it's, uh, I, I don't understand the, why you decided to veer off and do your own thing. I know you say it, I don't, I don't remember. It's in the spirit of our plan, but I, I don't know why, why it's not more compatible with our plan. Especially in the Hoover watershed overlay. I think I've addressed everything else, so that's all I have for now.
So having heard all that, you can continue to address some of these comments or we can vote. If you'd like a chance to take back and, and address, I mean, a lot of Chairman Vaughn's comments are going to impact your site layout. Doesn't have to, doesn't have to kill the deal, but I think it's worth considering.
Understood. We did try and set the building more towards the back. And with American Structure Point, it, it just didn't seem like it was feasible. I can't give you the specifics off the top of my head of why that was. Originally, I was pushing for the back of the lot as well. But it just, it, it came to the front of the lot, kind of where the old building footprint was. I don't know. I, I, I think we should probably, it's your call, but take your comments under advisement and kind of maybe regroup a little bit.
I will say also, you know, there's three tanks there that are right behind the building that, that you want to have a 10-foot buffer.
But I think the tanks can be moved, but, but the, what do you call it?
The mound.
The mound.
The existing mound can stay. So if you have to move the tanks, but keep your existing septic in the replacement.
Right. Just trying to keep expense down, right? Moving those tanks is $30,000 to $40,000 endeavor where we've been able to test those and show that they're going to be compliant and the Health Department is in agreement with that. You know, that's a $10,000 item, so. But understood.
And then the access to, you know, ideally the parking could move up, but do you want? There's a lot of, you know, it's like you think you almost have it because we went through this. And American Structure Point with us and our architect with us. And you think you're, oh, ma- maybe this would be better. And then when you get to that, you, you kind of hit the end of the maze of where that is. But, you know, under advisement, you know, can try to rethink it. We really tried to do that too, even on some Sebastian's comments in the zoning board and it just...
Right.
And I will just share that, uh, what is it? I've heard The Grove on Big Walnut and Worthington Road. They had proposed a lot of divergences in pushing that development to the back of the property. There was a lot of wetlands. And the trustees, we continued it. They, they could create the same design, no divergences. It pushed it up to, to the intersection. And in the end, we ended up granting all of the divergences and allowing them to push it to the back because it was the best for that plot. So I just ask that you come back to us, show us the design. In the end, if we decide that this is the best for this plot. Right? I'm not ruling this out. I would just, before I just assume this is the best option. I have to try to do what's best, what I think for the township and, and our, our plans and our design and our, our rules. So I would just appreciate you trying to see if it's possible.
Yes. Another reason for that building location too was kind of, it is in line with the other structures that are down the roads, right? So it, it's a good sightline, but I understand, you know, being that close, so.
I move to continue the public hearing for the subject of final development plan application requested by Mindy Cosman. ZC case number 2024-03, also known as Olive Branch, until we establish it. I don't know that we can get both of those in on the...
No, I think this will take longer than we could do with a trustee meeting attached. We're, I believe we'll need a special meeting.
Trustee Antinets may I recommend that the applicant maybe give us an idea of how long they may need to develop the materials that have been requested?
I can promise we won't be ready by August 1st.
That works out then for both parties.
If it's a special session, I, I don't know what that would entail and how we could do that and what that timeline would be.
We're pretty flexible.
Hold the third, um, third Thursday for...
The 15th?
That, well, the third, you're right, it is the 15th.
It's August 15th, though.
I don't know. I, I can't, can we?
There's an option to table, which would mean essentially it's, it's sort of being continued, but to a date, time and place indefinite, which means they would then have to pay an untabling fee in advance of wanting to bring it back to you so we could advertise, because we would have to run an advertisement at that point.
You don't want to do that. If we do the 15th, they can call and cancel. We could just, no.
Yes, we could, they could always say, hey, that's not going to work. I mean, for them to do the 15th, they would have to give us...
You can cancel. We still have to show up, but it'll be a five-minute meeting.
I need to just double check that, the room should be available because of what trustee Goodman said, but I need to check. Because that's usually where it really starts to become sticky.
Yeah, but we won't need that much time. We've already reviewed a lot of this material.
That's, that's true. I just need to make sure the room is actually available that evening. And it took a second for the, that calendar to populate on my phone. It does look like we did keep it open that evening, fortunately, per our procedure. So I have to make sure I am available
Yep.
that evening.
I, I think if we do push to the back though, we will lose our second building. We'll have to demo that building.
I have a design where you can add on to it. Could you, could you just attach it to the building? One in the same?
I don't know what design you have, but we could look at that, but I don't think that would look very good.
Oh, okay. I knew you were going to redo the outs exterior anyway.
Yeah, we were going to make it look like the main building.
That building isn't old. You know, that was added not that many years ago. And so, yes, we, I, I guess, from an entirely personal perspective, again, I am not a developer. And so when you talk about $30,000 and $40,000 to move a tank and you talk about demolishing a building that I actually need, right? Because I'm going to provide lawn care, because I'm going to water the flowers that are there, because I'm providing all of that myself. I'm not going to be outsourcing cleaning. I'm not going to be outsourcing the, the mowing. Like this is a, is a family deal.
Right.
To throw around those types of numbers, that is a very significant percentage of my budget. Like I'm just, I'm just being completely real.
Yeah, I understand that.
I am one person who's currently working five jobs to make this happen. And that's, that's not something that's sustainable. I'm doing it for now for a reason. So to just be like, oh, move the septic, oh, move this, oh, tear down this building. I, I hear you because that's, that's you on your side of the table. I'm over here saying that, that is a huge number for something that isn't a must. Meaning that there's no other way to, to do it. So, um, it feels like a very big ask to, to move septic tanks that are, that are functioning, that I have stressed about since last June as to whether or not, right? Because it's been, it's been a huge burden. The septic system has been a huge thing from the second that we called Matt Dreyer and said, hey, can we walk through the property? And I, I feel like we've, we've put a lot of effort into ensuring that this is going to work. And talking to the Health Department, ad nauseam, and having them come out, putting money into already remediating it so they can test it. So they could, you know, replacing the things that need to be replaced because frankly, it wasn't maintained well, right? We inherited some problems. I know the, I know the property is small. I can't make it bigger. I cannot buy the property next door. And so at some point, at, at some point, there's only so much I can do because I'm just a person.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback. Well, we're going to continue to August 15th, correct, Joe?
Yeah, it looks like the hall's available, staff is available. Just so the board knows, if the applicant does request a continuance, you will still have to come meet for the sole purposes of convening and then passing that motion, just...
Right.
But only two of us.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
And what, what date would materials be due if we follow that?
Well, that's a difficult question because usually staff just reviews one iteration. And now we're talking about multiple iterations. And do you really want me to do a full review or are you just looking for concept drawings to say, hey, we like this better? Please actually fully develop it.
I don't need another review.
Okay.
I just want to see the other designs.
Yeah, if you just want to see concept drawings, then we can do it as late as you want.
Yeah.
I mean, but I prefer at least 24 hours in advance so we can post them in the website and all that stuff.
And I prefer a weekend to kind of have time to look at this stuff. So the 9th of August would give us the 10th and 11th to review.
Is that feasible?
We'll make it feasible.
Okay.
And try to clarify with Structure Point on that access.
We will.
Yeah. If I'm misreading that email...
I doubt you're misreading it, but it's just different than what we had been led to believe.
We want you to be misreading it because that's completely contradictory to what we've been told, so. Yes, we will be exploring it. Trust me.
All right, do I reread this?
You may want to start from the beginning just so we get a clean motion.
All right. Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the subject of final development plan application requested by Mindy Cosman, ZC case number 2024-03, also known as Olive Branch, until 6:30 p.m. until August 15th at 6:30 in the Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development and, and Zoning Department by August 9th at 4:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll, Joe.
Roll call, trustee Vaughn. Trustee Goodman.
Yes.
Trustee Antinets.
Yes. Having nothing more before the board, I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at...
8:57.
8:57. Do I have a second?
Sec, oh, go ahead. Go for it.
A second.
Seconded by Vaughn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.